Again, we have four rain gardens, a little larger than what you have outside. Additionally, the massing and grading concepts work to minimize the transitional grading and avoid large maintain lawn areas. Well, why is that important? Well, many times in some of our residential communities, we have enormous lawn areas. Lawn areas, you know, they're great for Canadian geese and other things, but for the most part, when you have to mow them, when you have to, you know, provide fertilizers and pesticides and maintain them, they're not so great. So what we've done is we tighten up the grades, transitional grades where we could, and we're planting kind of wildflower mixes with, you know, a proper erosion controlled mats so that once they're established, once we establish those perennial wildflower mixes, it's no mowing. Every once in a while, you have to do a few things just to keep them, keep them maintained, but we don't have to spend a lot of money with fertilizers and pesticides and everything else. We'll have a self-perpetuating, you know, meadow mix in those steep areas. And steep areas I'm talking about are along this face of our entry roadway and also along this edge going to the west. It'd be a very, a nice companion going into wetland transition areas and the wetlands Next exhibit five. This is the drawing C8, sorry, utilities plan, also dated November 8th, 2019. So this is very simple. The water service is, you know, connections to, we have water basically circumnavigating both buildings. Right now, our plans show for a water connection back down to Cherry Hill Road. There is a possibility of a secondary connection to the water main up on Upper Pond Road. We're working out the details of whether or not that's necessary. We have communicated with your fire subcode official. He has taken a first pass at the hydrants. He has final say on where exactly the hydrants are. We have them in good placement right now, but we expect to finalize that with him before too long. Wastewater is accommodated. We have our wastewater pickups in the courtyard area of both buildings, and we simply come across and tie into an existing sanitary sewer down by Upper Pond Road. It's a relatively simple connection. Our telephone, electric, and gas utilities will serve the complex with underground connections and will be in accordance with the requirements of those respective utilities. Next plan. This is exhibit six. This is not in your package. We basically took the landscape plan and colored it up. I have 11 by 17 if we wanted to.
Can you please have that marked then? A2.
This one needs to be marked.
A2. A2. And how did you want to describe this?
So this is exhibit six, drawing R01 dated 11/8/2019. 12/6, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna go with colorized site plan rendering, if that's okay.
That's a wonderful term. So our landscape strategy promotes the preservation of major deciduous trees as I talked about. So again, that includes this edge right here. Just look at the massed trees that we're able to kind of keep. In the prior application, this crept into, into this wooded area by a wider margin and also crept in along this edge. We tightened, we really tightened things up. It really is on a previous coverage diet.
I thought they were actually on both sides.
So this visual barrier, particularly coming from Cherry Hill Road, for those familiar with, you know, traveling on Cherry Hill Road, this will be virtually invisible for those motoring traffic on Cherry Hill Road. In fact, you'll have a hard time seeing anything until you come well onto Upper Pond Road. As again, I mentioned, the limitation disturbance of vegetation to the west, which, you know, protects the wetlands and wetland transition areas and the downgrading sites. So again, that's, that's a very important edge to the west. The undulating berms that I've talked about, we really beefed up our planting plans in this area. It's quite an opulent layer of plans, of planting. I did speak to your forest department, and they're very happy with both plant selection and how we chose to provide the screening. At one time, there was consideration of providing some additional screening on the opposite side of Upper Pond Road. But for those who travel that, there's very little room. It would be very effective. In fact, the mortality of plants, planting that strip would not be terribly good. By having a large area to work with, we will, we will enjoy good planting success in that Based upon many years of SJP's experience at Morris Corporate Center, combined with guidance of PSNS's senior landscape architect, Bruce Hawkins, we have a comprehensive plant And that, that is a great complement to both the massing and the grading strategies. The plant list offers 91 major shade trees, 59 ornamental trees, 106 evergreen trees with a multitude of deciduous and evergreen shrubs, and ornamental grasses, and perennials and ground covers. They all have known adaptability to Morris Corporate Center. There was a question about the, our driveway side triangles, and we did pay particular attention to make sure that our plantings in those side triangles were, were low and would not impede or impair driver visibility as we approached those, those intersections. Additionally, the plantings have been selected to provide an array of plant color and textures through the growing season. We like to have sequential blooms so that from the onset of spring, we get different colors that are happening in different spots, you know, in the landscape plan. So it becomes a very vibrant place of color and texture right from, right from the early spring right on through fall foliage. And once we, we have a very strong collection of evergreen trees and evergreen shrubs, and that, that evergreen skeleton will hunker down the landscape through, through the dormant, dormant season. Existing trees will be safe and protected to the extent practical. We'll make sure that in our soil erosion plan, we protect the drip lines of those particular trees in focus. I did have a conversation with your forest, with your parks department about some of the existing trees, if you were to drive through the site. You know, some of them have been ravaged badly by lightning. The Emerald Ash Board, is anybody familiar with Emerald Ash Board? It's terrible. I have a stewardship forest myself, and it's just, it's just horrible. And unfortunately, we have a number of ash here that are, that are rapidly dying. So we'll be working with that to make sure that those trees that are infected, those trees that are, have been struck by lightning, have been felled and taken out so that, you know, if we need to do some supplemental things, we can do that early on as opposed to having a comprehensive landscape plan and all of a sudden find that we have trees and limbs falling on that which we have just built. For the lighting design, lighting provides 14-foot-high, sharp cutoff, energy-efficient LED fixtures along the entranceways and driveways and arrival courts. And so again, that's in this area right in here, right through the arrival court, the arrival courts and our entrance driveways. Those are relatively low fixtures, 14-foot-high, very sharp cutoff, crisp white light. For our perimeter parking area, we like to do something that's a little bit different. So many times you'll see people put lights up against the buildings and try to push the light out towards the edge of the parking. For a secure residential area, what we chose to do is to go a little higher. We have 27-foot-high poles that are, we don't have many of them, but we have poles that are around the perimeter, and what we do is we push the light back towards the building. So that, so now what we've done, we've created kind of a safe environment, a safe, visible environment from the outer perimeter. Instead of bathing the first or second level homes with, with light bothering them as they try to go to sleep, now all of a sudden, this light is controlled in a sharp cutoff pattern back towards the building. Go back in time, I lived in a fraternity house on High Street in Newark for a while, and I had a PSG overhead outside my window, and I swore I was gonna kill it at some point. So if you've ever lived in a house where you have high intensity light outside your window, it's punishing. So I never did kill it. I respected PSGs properly. But, so for that reason, we, you know, we've done something different, and that's what this is. So these fixtures are clear, white. Our coverage is very good, so if you look at the photo metrics, we have very little out spillover from the parking areas themselves, and it's just very, very efficient. So that's what this lighting plan provides. And by the way, all these fixtures work to mitigate upward sky glow. So by controlling the intensity and the spread of these lights, this is a very green-friendly, efficient light plan.
Sir, is there a lighting plan included in your package?
It's on the landscape. It's within the package. I didn't.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just ask you a couple of questions. What are the recreational elements?
I'm getting it.
Okay.
I'm going as fast as I can.
There's a lot of material. You're doing well.
Yes, thank you. So actually, so it's the next one.
Okay.
So recreation facilities, while the building program offers, and this is the architect will talk about this, offers both active and passive recreation amenities. The plan that's been submitted to has no site amenities on submitted application. So in our conversations with the planner and others, the applicant is now proposing a tot lot, which best suited east of building B. And I'm gonna put a pushpin on where that would be. So the advantage of that blue pushpin is that it's an area that grade-wise, I can accommodate. We can put a safety surface, we can protect it with a fence, and it's naturally protected from Upper Pond Road as well as the entry road. It's actually a nice quiet spot, and while it's not exactly equidistant from the buildings A and B, it's not too far off, and it's right on the sidewalk system that's provided there. So that, that is, that will be part of this application if you consider this.
I'm sorry, that's what?
A tot lot.
A tot lot.
Playground.
Playground. And the, and the equipment will be geared for tots between ages in two and five. And my last comment is the project includes three zoning compliant monument signs, one at Cherry Hill Road. One at the, at the entrance, the major driveway, and also one at the secondary entrance off Lower Pond Road. These signs will be 40 square feet or less. They'll feature granite background with high brushed aluminum numbers and letters, and all three signs have low level exterior LED illumination in front of the signs, not backlit or anything like that. Excuse me, very simple, and, and they're compliant with your ordinance. And that's it.
Okay. Will the building be spread cleared?
Yes.
Are there any other questions you, you would like to? Okay. Ms. Vavate, did you have any additional questions for the witness?
Yes. I believe I heard you confirm, and this is actually in response to Mr. Kenjiano's memo, that the parking spaces may be assigned later by the management company? Okay. On the land banking, I believe, and it's Ms. Veely's determination as zoning officer, that if a determination is made in the future that you want to pave those, that you need to come back to this board for that kind of a modification. So I, that can just be in the record. Yes? What do you think?
We, in the past, we.
We land bank it?
Land banked it and said it, with permission of the township engineer.
Okay. I just, I wanted to make sure that was clear on the record.
The only problem is he, we found out later, he is not the prior approval of the zoning department or construction. He comes last. So we've in the past had any applicants who had land banking to return to the board because they weren't on the site plan. The township engineer is the last person who reviews the application, zoning and construction being first, so he, we changed that. He's never, we were gonna change the ordinances to remove the township engineer from those parts. He's actually not involved usually in those part of the applications.
I'm not in the part I'm hearing you. Oh, I'm sorry. He's, the township engineer is normally of the departments for permitting processes. The zoning officer is the first department that you submit for permits, then it's construction, and then at some point, the township engineer. As the project continues, the engineering department and the construction department does the inspections. So zoning is always your first department to submit for permits, and there is no department as the prior approval. So it's usually the zoning officer who decides whether an application needs to return to the board or whether that jurisdiction falls under the zoning officer. Anything in the past, and I've been with the town 29 years, as zoning officer, I do not approve anything with parking. So unless, so if there's something that's banked and, and there's a possible change, and there always is a change, that we've always asked applicants to return the board. And I think if there were no variances, they went to the minor.
Yeah. I would think that that would be approval of the minor site plan committee, which meets from six, from 7:00 to 7:30, and is a smaller board.
Even if, even if the bank is shown on the plans, these plans?
No, that's correct, because there's gotta be some control over it. What we're approving is banked spots, and we'd hate to see them be open, because I understand that you represent a responsible property owner, but who's to say this doesn't get sold to a REIT and, and all of it is unbanked immediately?
Have we done that with cases where they actually made the ground possible to be used as parking without change, where it had a, like a pervious?
Pervious pavement.
A pervious pavement type of situation where it was not intended to be used as parking, but it was approved as parking, and if it really was needed as an emergency backup for parking, that it could be done without other permissions?
We've always had them come back to the board, zoning and engineering. Usually, there's always a change, too. I've never had anyone do exactly what they wanted in the past. It was always, you know, can I, can we move them to the left, or can we move them to the right? Can we add two more? I've actually never had, and usually by the time final's done, there's usually some changes, and we add that. There are certain things that you can do administratively, but parking has never been one of them.
The other thing, and maybe this is just my druthers, but if it's not needed, it would be nice if there were some mechanism where it could be not just lawn, but actually be landscaped. If it's, rather than, I think you referenced it being lawn for the life of the project. Lawn is okay, but bushes or trees are better if you're not needing it. So I guess that's just something for the board to think about. That's my, my soapbox on that. Retaining wall, I think you confirmed that it's zoning compliant. Lighting, one of our comments had been, could you bring the poles down in height? Now, obviously, that means you have to have more poles, so it's, it's kind of a balancing act. Just wanted the planning board to be aware of that.
It is a balancing act, so, and we tried to play with that, so we have fewer poles, and I get the spread across the entire, almost 70 feet to get to the base of the building, and I'm coming over the parked cars. So we feel that this is the right solution to provide security, a sense of security for the entire community parking area right to the foot of the building.
And you've used that type of lighting on comparable projects, that height?
I have, actually, yes, but this is the first time where I'm intentionally bringing things up so I can light from the outside instead, you know, because if I tried to do it between the parking and the building, I have very little room there, and now all of a sudden, now I'm creating a hardship with whoever's sleeping next to that particular light fixture. No matter what I do for house guards, it's still bright.
So is there your testimony that in order to cover the span between, of the parking space as well as walking?
And also getting over the cars and.
You would need that height?
I'm recommending that.
Okay.
Or more poles, which.
I had a question on that as well. So at 27 feet, you're saying that the light would not be casting toward the building? You have your podium parking level, and then you have the first, say, two levels of residence. These 27-foot lights will not be casting toward?
Yeah, the angle, the angle tucked back down is gonna, is gonna be basically aimed at the five or six-foot level of the, of the podium portion of the building.
If, if I may, could you just point out where some of those poles might be? Not exact positions, but the, the outline of where they would be situated?
Give me a second, I'll.
Or your colleague?
No, it's not on that set. I have to. So on the face of building A, this is building A to the south, I only have two fixtures on this side. I have two fixtures on the B side, two fixtures here, two fixtures here, two fixtures on the north side, two fixtures on the south side. It's very efficient, and if you look at the pattern on your drawing, C12, very little overlap, it's a very, very tight, tight lighting pattern.
And the spillover to the outside part of the property?
It's minimal, it barely goes beyond the paved area.
Okay.
Okay.
LEDs have great control. They, they're a great tool in our toolbox these days.
Just, just a couple more that there are landscape design standards that are in place for all of the affordable housing sites, and so we took a look at those, and the applicant did provide a narrative that I think demonstrates general compliance. There are very, some very specific requirements, though, and I just wanted to make sure that you either comply or that we know if you need a waiver. And I think you mentioned, Mr. Fleming, the maximum side slope with the berms will be two to one on the slope.
Three to one.
Three to one.
Three to one was max. We're trying to make them gentler. In most cases, they are. We want to make them subtle, like the Goff course berm. They're not, I mean, Corps of Engineers dykes.
I think that's preferred.
Okay. Great. Minimum size of the deciduous trees and the buffers, two and a half to three-inch caliper, I think you meet that.
Yeah, we, we see that.
And then slope plantings are one, one to three? One vertical to, and you talked about the site triangles. And just to confirm, the applicant did provide follow-up information on tree removal and confirm that there's approximately 50 mature trees will need to be removed, and the landscaping plan calls for just over 250 new trees.
Better wall.
So I think that does it for my engineering comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Kajano?
Yeah, I have a few. Can you give a little bit more testimony on circulation, say, for a package delivery vehicle? Where would you envision that coming? Would that be coming at the front?
So we have room in both arrival courts for both, you know, you might say postal service and for FedEx. The courts have been designed for UPS.
Sir, you'll be receiving UPS as well? Your neighbor?
Mr. Fleming, could you just move the microphone?
Make a like.
Well, we love UPS, actually.
Mr. Fleming, could you just move the microphone a little closer, please?
So, yes, yes. Did I omit? Oh, I'm fine. So that's, so that's primary delivery area for, for those types of services.
I noticed that the, it's an 18-foot-wide aisle. It seems a little narrow if you've got to have like a UPS type truck parked, coming and making delivery, and then a ride-sharing service, an Uber, if somebody wants to navigate that. I think, I think you've got to take a little bit closer look and maybe widen that a little bit so that you can have a bypass lane if, if somebody else is.
So what we've done is, you know, the, the curbs are battered, and so we really, we intentionally made things narrow. We want, I want them narrow. We're trying to maximize green space, and if they have to kind of run up on the curb, that's okay. So we can, we can talk more about that.
I'm just a little concerned about that with the number of units, the number of package deliveries everyone gets nowadays.
I understand.
And the number of rideshare, like Uber-type services that people are getting, that'd be a heavily traveled, you know, area there.
Yeah, I expect so.
Yeah. And then what about for a larger truck, like someone's moving in?
So for move-ins, this will be a management procedure, and so discussion is, and the architect can talk more about that. We have basically four entrances to each building. What they'll do is they'll cordon off an area when they're expecting a delivery, and they'll be able to bring in those deliveries through the garage door to the elevator core and get them to the units. Those deliveries happen relatively quickly, so that's, the management committee will be able to deal with that on a routine basis.
And you had mentioned assigned parking. Do you envision assigned parking on the surface spaces or all of them within the parking decks?
What I testified to is that there is a possibility that the management, the building management may assign those parking spaces at a later date, so.
Could be exterior or interior?
Mostly interior, most likely not the exterior. It would be very difficult to assign the exterior spaces. The only assignment on the exterior spaces would be for the handicap accessible. We have handicap accessible both interior as well as exterior.
Also, can you just talk about that Upper Pond Road? Now, that's, that's not a public right-of-way, that's in an easement?
It's an ease.
It is, it is a public right-of-way that the municipality has accepted.
As an easement, a right-of-way easement, it's not?
Yes.
It's not at, in fee?
True.
That's correct.
Right. But nonetheless, have accepted for maintenance, et cetera.
Okay. So that has been that way since the prior applications, there's no change?
There's no change.
It's gonna stay part of the law? And who maintains that? That's the township or that's?
Township.
On wetlands, to the west of the property, you, you maintained, I guess, tried to maintain the existing limited disturbance. Are you disturbing beyond the limited disturbance, the prior limit of disturbance, and are you going into the wetland buffer? Do you require a?
No, we've avoided wetland transition areas. We have no wetland impacts. In fact, we are actually providing more green space in front of the transition areas.
So you don't have to modify the transition area or encroach on the tree?
That was one of my commandments going into this assignment.
As far as utilities, you had mentioned utilities. Do you know if the town for water has the enough allocation to serve the property?
My understanding is that the allocation that was drawn for the prior approval has sufficient capacity for this intended residential use. The question that was posed is, is there a concern with the Bureau of Safe Drinking Water at New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection as to whether or not the classification going from a commercial user to a residential user makes any difference? In my opinion, my experience, there, that is, there is no difference. You know, gallon allocation is a gallon allocation. I have, but I need to.
But no, no, no issues with, with the amount of allocation that's available?
That's correct.
Okay. And what about same for sewer, the capacity of the sewer?
I'm not aware of any contradiction or mutation.
And you agreed to give the will-serve letters in the agreement?
That's correct.
Yes, okay. To get that on the record. Can you talk a little bit about the stormwater management? Now, you have some onsite, but in, in the review, a large part of it goes to the existing ponds, regional ponds. If you can just give a little bit more testimony on what happens with them and who maintains that? There, the ponds are bifurcated. They're on some on this property and this applicant, and a portion of the pond are on the other properties as well?
That's correct. There is a cost sharing for the care and the care of the Cousins Dam, both the Lower Pond and the Upper Pond. There are control structures, both in the Lower Pond and the Upper Pond, for that purpose. So.
There are agreements in place, as you were saying?
There are recorded easements with respect to that between the various parties who were involved.
And.
And there are no, just to be clear, there are no changes to control structures on either the Upper Pond or the Lower Pond for this application. All that was necessary to be done was done under the UPS application.
Okay, and those, those applications were approved by the DEP in 2001?
That's correct. I'll say 17.
Okay, so under the current stormwater management rules?
That's correct.
That was my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna turn very quickly back to Ms. Vavate.
Just one more. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
You testified that there will be three monument signs. Maybe this is a question for the architect. Is there any wayfinding signage proposed?
We'll talk about it.
Okay.
Okay. I'll open up to questions from the board.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Go ahead. Mr. Mandel?
Traffic, school buses?
Yes, school buses, you know, the circulation for school buses were taken into account for circulation.
Similar to UPS, FedEx?
Yes, exactly.
They'll, they'll come in and they'll assume pickup at the front of the buildings?
We actually assume that they'll be in the frontier, but again, an SU-30 vehicle can negotiate both drop-off areas, so if that's what they choose to do, they'll be able to do that.
Yes.
Several questions. The first one is a simple one. Maybe could, we like that drawing, that exhibit there. Could you use your pointer, you don't have to get up, and show us, you were describing the retaining walls?
Yes.
We were having some difficulty trying to place them on the different exhibits.
There's only a single retaining wall, and that's...
Oh, that's it, right there. Okay. 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 And you would also, it caught my attention, and I might have misunderstood, but there, you were describing what I would refer to as like a catch basin for stormwater runoff, and it had some type of self-regulating mechanism to not dump all the water at once?
Yes. So that, our detention culvert basically comes around the southern corner. Again, I mentioned we have two permitted, designed, permitted, and built outfalls to the upper pond, and so for my, the connection that's to the south, I had a limited rate that I could discharge to. So rather than change that outfall and get into flypaper down at the state, we created a detention culvert that reduced the rate of runoff to that point of discharge. And so this way, we balance, we provide hydrologic balance to the system.
So are you, would you then, are you testifying that given the increased volume of some of the storms that we've seen, that the system, even though it is sort of like an ebb-and-flow system, it has enough capacity to withstand, you know, heavy rains, so that we're not going to get it backed up and...
Or washed out.
Or washed out.
Overrun?
So this has been designed to current state standards. I work at a national level dealing with, you know, changing hydrology and everything else. Our world is changing. I mean, right in my office, we actually, we're a Cocoa Rass rain station, so last year we had 60.2 inches of rain. So the issue is, is we are seeing more rain. We're seeing more frequency of rain. My specific responsibility for the design is to make sure that it meets the requirements of the state of New Jersey, which it does. But you caught me with this whole increase of rainfall. Things are changing, and at some point, the engineering community has to get a better grip on what that means.
And last question. You mentioned a nice area for toddlers, tots, as you referred to it. They tend to grow. So what, do you have any contingency for, we don't expect a lot of children in this development, I understand that, but to the extent that there's some, is there, is there any contingency for children when they get older? Because it's kind of isolated from the recreational areas by major thoroughfares. And, you know, I, I remember, you know, kids wander when there's nothing to do. And so that, I didn't hear any reference to that.
So there are no exterior plans for that? The architect has an amenity package that deals with certain opportunities on the inside of the building, but there are no, nothing that addresses adolescent growth or recreation within the site?
Okay, thank you.
Just to add on to the questions about the water, do you have any quantitative assessments of how much capacity would be able to be handled by the system?
I do. I mean, it's, our overall system is designed for 100-year recurrence interval of storm.
Okay.
Which is a significant storm. Because I've designed so much in this park, when Floyd, Floyd hit, Floyd in this area produced eight and a half inches of rain in a 24-hour period, and had the antecedent moisture condition that satisfied what we consider 100-year storm. And I, and I just finished Morris Corbett IV, and I watched very carefully as, as the flow level built on those various impoundments, and it worked perfectly. We had actually handled that, that extreme storm, Hurricane Floyd. So this will do the same.
Okay. Any other questions of the engineer from the board?
No, just, we have several questions on to that effect on the stormwater management report. It is a very complicated system. It incorporates this site as well as the other sites, and we had several questions. We just asked that it becomes a condition of approval, should there be approval, that it meets our satisfaction on meeting the stormwater regulations?
The state's regulations.
The state's regulations.
And be happy to do that. It is very complicated. It is 700 pages of stuff. And so that's better...
That's a good weekend read.
And so, no, I will meet and walk them through, just so that they're comfortable with what we have.
Yeah. Thank you. We appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mealy?
Mr. Fleming, any idea what impact a project of this size would have on our existing school system? How many children might be generated by such a project?
I'm not qualified to answer that.
Is anyone here qualified to answer that?
Mr. Coakley, do you have a witness for that?
We haven't brought a witness about that, given that it has a right application, so we have not done that. It is, is a predominantly one-bedroom development, if I recall correctly.
Call the number. It's a pretty good mix. It's a lot of one-bedrooms, not many three-bedrooms.
I was going to ask, I assume the architect is going to get into the bedroom mix?
Yes, he will.
Okay.
It could be a concern as far as...
Of cour, of course, Mr. Mealy. It's somewhat outside the board's purview, unfortunately, but I think we are going to be provided information from the architect on what the bedroom mix is, and from which we can hopefully figure out how many children we might have.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right. Well, at this point, we will open up to questions from the general public for the engineer. So that's in regards to the testimony range that you just heard now. So if anybody would like to ask questions, I'll open up the mic for public questions.
As you come up, if you would please state your name, state and spell your name for the record, please.
Yeah. When you were diagnosed.
Would you spell that, please?
I-N-E-S.
Nora.
T-A-L-T, from 11 Grecian Street.
Is that, can you see if that microphone's on?
I don't think it is.
It should be on.
Sounds like it's on.
Oh, is it?
It's on. My telephone's on. Can you hear me?
Barely hear it. Right. Give her one of the other microphones.
Why don't you sit down?
Okay, I'll sit down.
Yep, you're welcome to.
Hopefully this doesn't, I won't have a leg injury after this. Okay. You had mentioned before, did you get my name? Okay, great, thanks. We have the Troy Brook in, on our development, and this excess water, you know, catch basin or whatever, is that going to affect the Brook at all, as far as you are concerned, as you know?
He needs a micro, maybe...
Maybe you could pass it.
Slide the two microphones, yeah.
Why don't you use this one, Mr. President?
Just so everyone knows, that's both so you can hear, but there also needs to be a recording of the hearing tonight.
Okay.
So we need everything on the record.
So the purpose of our system is to reduce the rate of runoff from the proposed development so that it matches the existing rate of runoff. So to the extent that we get a precipitation event that stays within a certain parameter up to 100-year storm, what Troy Brook will experience is, is a rate of runoff that is no higher than what happened before the site was developed. So that's, that's what this design does. That doesn't mean that we can't have a precipitation event that exceeds 100-year recurrence interval. In fact, there are some of us on the engineering community that think that we're in a pattern that that will happen, but for the purposes of this application, the purposes of, my responsibility for this application, it does meet that requirement.
Can I ask another question, please?
Sure.
I'm not sure about if you are, this has nothing to do with that, but the rate of traffic flow?
So that's coming up?
Oh, coming up after this? Okay, so, just wondering how this is going to affect our neighborhood, people cutting through instead of...
Where do you live, Mr. President?
Uh, Grecian Street.
All right.
Grecian Street. Okay.
There'll be another opportunity.
Okay.
Come back up?
Yep.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure.
Just, just so everyone, if I may, they have three witnesses to present tonight.
Oh, okay.
Once those witnesses, you'll have an opportunity to question each of those witnesses, and at the end of the proceedings, we will open to the public comment. That may or may not happen tonight. But public comment, you're supposed to hear all of the testimony before providing comments, so.
I have a question of our chairman. Historically, we've cut off testimony at 10:30 PM. Is that going to be the policy going forward?
I, I think we have to limit ourselves to a 10:30 timeframe. So thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, just let the public know as well, as well as the applicant.
Yes. So, Mr. Coakley, is 10:30 will...
Sure.
Okay.
Next witness?
Any other, any other public comment or questions?
Yes.
Public questions of the engineer.
My name is Margaret Collins. We live block 136, lot 61. It's a tiny little notch...
Would you please speak a little bit louder?
Ma'am, we can't hear you.
The only residents left on Old Cherry Hill Road. I'm concerned, what is the distance from the back of our property to the back corner of the building?
Yes.
Right?
here that needs to be able to hear everything?
Okay. He determined it was 214 feet from the back. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the public for our engineer, or for the...
Applicant's engineer.
Applicant's engineer, yes. Okay. Well, the next witness, please.
I'm going to have Mr. Johnson, the architect, and my colleague, Mr. Benson.
Okay. And let's please make sure we leave adequate time for questioning.
Sure.
Thank you.
Ryan Benson.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Sure. Stuart Johnson, S-T-U-A-R-T, last name Johnson, J-O-H-N-S-O-N.
Would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience, please?
Sure. I'm a principal at Menlo Moscow Architects and Planners. I have a bachelor's in architecture from Syracuse University. I am a registered architect with a current license in New Jersey as well as New York. I have over 15 years of experience specializing in mixed-use multifamily residential design, and I've qualified as a architect and provided testimony in over a dozen municipalities across the state, as well as the Superior Court of Bergen County here in New Jersey.
Any board members, questions about the credentials? Very good. Proceed.
Good evening, board members. As Mr. Coakley said, my name is Ryan Benson. I'm his associate from Connell Foley. Mr. Johnson, could you tell us about the architectural design of the building?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I'd like to start by utilizing the aerial site plan that was produced by PSNS, that was previously marked into as, as an exhibit, I believe Exhibit Eight Two. I would just like to point that the site has great access to existing retail found within the township, but also has great access to Route 80, Route 287, Route 46, and opportunities for employment found within the township. The site provides for an ideal location for a low-density inclusionary housing development in line with the design standards and per the recently adopted Affordable Housing Settlement Zone. The proposed project being considered by the board this evening is for a new 325-unit rental apartment community located here within the township. The project is being branded and called The Morrison. The project, as proposed, consists of two residential apartment buildings consisting of Building A located here to the south and Building B located here to the north. Building A specifically has 162 residential apartment units. Building B has 163 residential apartment units. Each building contains 134 structured parking spaces located within a podium level, which is internal to each building. So essentially, within the building footprint of each respective building, there are 134 structured parking spaces for a total of 268 structured parking spaces onsite. And then that is in addition to the adjacent surface parking located conveniently around each respective building. The buildings themselves were designed on a north-south axis, as previously stated. Both buildings provide for an elegant landscaped motor court area at the, at the front entrance that, that face each respective building, creating an entry and arrival sequence, either traveling from Upper Pond Road through the main entrance here, providing a grand sense of arrival, or through the secondary access to the site located here to the north. Each building also provides for an open outdoor courtyard area. Building A provides for an amenity courtyard, an amenity courtyard area that's open to the south that maximizes natural daylight. That courtyard provides for an active outdoor amenity space for the residential community that consists of an outdoor pool area that both buildings and the entire community would have access to. It also includes outdoor barbecue grills and lounge areas for the residents. And the units that front that area along, along the ground floor would have direct access to private patio areas. And similarly, Building B also provides for an open outdoor courtyard area above the lower level of parking that provides more, for more passive outdoor amenity spaces. Similar to Building A, it has barbecue grills and outdoor seating area. And again, the residential units that front on that on the ground level would have access to a private secure patio area. So again, ample opportunity for outdoor amenities for the residential community of all ages, certainly teenagers, but also adults for outdoor passive and active recreation. With that, I'd like to move to my first exhibit. This is Sheet A01. This is a, actually, Mark, if you could switch this exhibit and go right to, we'll take this exhibit down and go right to the next exhibit on the floor. So this is Sheet A05. This matches what is in your exhibit here this evening. This is just a color-rendered version of the proposed building plan for Building B. The building design for Building B and Building A are comparable to one another. They're each the same footprint with the same gross building square footage, other than the unit mix that I stated earlier. So each building is designed as a four-level wood frame building, providing four levels of residential apartment units over a ground-level parking area. Each building provides for two ingress/egress areas for vehicular access on the east and west, or on the, on the east and west building elevations. There would be a secure roll-up overhead garage door there that residents who had a parking spot underneath the building would have access to. From that lower secure parking area, the building elevators for the building come down to a secure lobby area, so that residents then would have access vertically up to the building. As previously stated, adjacent to each garage door, there's also a man door that would have a key fob access for residents who might be... have a key fob access for residents who might be parking in an adjacent surface parking area. That's also where we envision that the moving and load-in operation would occur for the building. So again, move-in would be controlled by building management. There'd be one apartment moving into any building at any given time. Those hours are typically controlled, so that there would only be one move-in in the AM, one move-in in the PM. Again, that would be maintained by the onsite building management. They would put out cones in the adjacent parking spaces, so that they could utilize that area for a short duration of time. Similarly, the refuse and recycling termination is located internal to each building. So we're providing a trash area at the basement podium level within the garage. And building management then would wheel two cubic yard rolling containers out to that curb for private hauling and pickup, one to two times a week, compliant with township ordinance in regards to hours of operation. So again, each building is four stories type 5A wood frame over a one-level concrete podium. As previously testified to, the four levels of type 5A wood frame construction for the apartment levels would provide a NFPA thirteen sprinkler system, which is above and beyond what's required by the building code, and is also in line with the recommendation that we received via the fire memo from the township. So with that NFPA thirteen sprinkler system, all of the interstitial and concealed spaces within the building would also provide sprinklers versus what's required by building code, which is a lesser system. So with that, I would just like to note that with the existing site grading and the proposed grading on the site, it allows for the massing of the building to be that of a four-story massing at the front entrance and main motor court. And then the site, with each respective building, Building B and Building A, grade to the north and grade to the south, to provide a five-story massing on the east and west elevations, and on then the open courtyard elevations. So we'll see that in a minute when we take a look at the building, when we take a look at the building elevations. With that, I'd like to talk a little bit just about the ground floor plan and the building layout. So immediately adjacent to the entry motor court here, this provides for a grand drop-off area for Uber or car-sharing programs. It also allows for a drop-off area for UPS, FedEx, et cetera, deliveries to the building. There's adequate queuing area. The area highlighted in yellow is the main residential lobby, which provides for a boutique hotel-style lobby for each building. Within that lobby area are opportunities for Wi-Fi and co-working, sort of ALCOs for the residents, areas that they could sit down and sort of interact with other residents. Immediately adjacent to that, the areas highlighted in the pastel colors here are the residential amenities that are programmed for each respective building. So each building has a primary clubroom space, which is approximately fifteen hundred square feet, where residents can gather. It would have flat-screen TVs, a wet bar area, a billiards table. Immediately adjacent to that would be a private dining area or private event room that residents could host small gatherings in. And each building would also provide a state-of-the-art fitness center for the community. So with that, we can advance to the next slide here. Sheet A oh six. So Sheet A oh six represents the typical second and third-level building plan, as well as the fourth-level building plan for each respective building. So you can see, as you move vertically up within the building, it's essentially a double-loaded corridor design, the residential units stacked within the building. As previously stated, Building A and B combined provide for three hundred and twenty-five apartment units, sixty-five of which are affordable units for the community, which is twenty percent, which complies with the affordable housing standards. Building A specifically is comprised of a hundred and thirty market-rate units with thirty-two affordable units, which is a total of a hundred and sixty-two. Within Building A, there are six studio units, there are one hundred and five one-bedroom units, forty-five two-bedroom units, and six three-bedroom units, which are all affordable units. Building B is comprised of a hundred and thirty market-rate units with thirty-three affordable units, six of which are studio units, one hundred and six are one-bedroom units, forty-four are two-bedroom units, and seven are three-bedroom units, which again are all affordable units. There was a question earlier about the overall makeup and mix of the proposed community. The studio and one-bedroom units combined are approximately sixty-nine percent of the units being proposed here. So again, we see in the market that one- and two-bedroom apartment units really don't generate schoolchildren, especially in these elevator-serve communities. So one point to note about the affordable units is that the affordable units would be spread throughout the building, on each floor of the building, and those units would be integrated into the apartment community. And walking or driving around the buildings, you wouldn't be able to tell where those units were located. So the exterior siding and finishes, the window design, et cetera, are going to be the same of that of the affordable units, as well as the market rate. They share the same building entrance, access to the same amenities for the community. So it's, you know, it's really a truly inclusionary design that's being proposed here, and also complies with the affordable housing requirements. With that, we can advance to the next slide, which is Sheet A oh seven. This is a typical roof plan. So again, a typical roof plan is comparable to that being designed for both Building A and Building B. You can see it's a flat roof design to the building. Located on that roof, we do have condensing units, so there'd be a forty-two-inch-high condensing unit for each one of the respective apartment units. They locate, they're located well set back from the edge of the building, and they would be screened from public view at grade, so those would not be perceptible or perceived by pedestrians at grade around that building. The proposed building height for the building, for each respective building, is fifty-four feet, where five stories and sixty feet is permitted. Building height is measured from the average grade around each respective building to the highest point of the roof deck. And another point to note here, there was a question about signage. So each building does propose one building identification sign. Drawing number two on Sheet A oh seven shows an entry canopy being proposed above the storefront entry, the aluminum storefront entry there at the primary building entrance. We are proposing raised aluminum dimensional letters, that would be LED halo lit, and they would have the building's name. So that would provide branding and building signage and sort of identity at the entrance to each of those communities. There's also above each of the parking garage doors, a small wayfinding signage, which is a building-mounted sign with raised dimensional letters there. So with that, we can take this exhibit down and move to. So we have two new exhibits to share this evening, Sheet A twelve and Sheet A thirteen.
These are not part of the.
These are not part of the package. These are illustrative perspective renderings that supplement the color-rendered building elevations that were part of your package, which we also have this evening. But I believe that the perspective renderings better show some of the building undulations, the vertical and horizontal massings, the varied cornice lines being proposed here, so.
Can we go ahead and mark those A three and A four respectively?
Sure.
With today's date?
So Sheet A twelve is an illustrative perspective view that's looking northwest at Building B. So upon entering into the community from Upper Pond Road, you would have Building B here in the foreground to your right, and flanking that across to the left, you would have Building A, creating a real sense of arrival to this community, compliant with the design standards found within the affordable housing settlement ordinance. There is a recommendation to provide vertically-oriented massing to the building to minimize horizontal static facades, and also create sort of a rhythm to the facade. So the proposed building and elevations were designed to provide a series of smaller elements. There is also a recommendation to create distinct corners, corner elements. Some of the other, I guess, architectural variation that can be seen in the facade are the projected bay elements and Juliet balconies that occur along the side elevations. You can see, as proposed here, we have a varied cornice line which breaks up the roof line of the building to make it feel like a series of pieces to that building. If we could advance to Sheet A thirteen. So A thirteen is the second illustrative perspective view. This is looking northeast from Building B, so essentially, you're standing in front of the rain garden in front of Building A, looking at the main entrance here to Building B. So in the foreground, you see that elegant landscaped motor court and drop-off area. You can see the nicely-designed crosswalks and pedestrian elements, I guess, at grade, as we envision that residents within each of those buildings would share amenities back and forth. You can see some of the human-scale elements that are being designed in the Juliet balcony.